All right, good evening and welcome to our town council meeting this evening. It's good to see everybody here if we can please call the roll.
Certainly. Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Al Britton.
Present.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I want to welcome the Davie Fire Department with us here this evening. We had some requests from our residents associated with wildfires. As we know, that was a big issue out west for in the country this year. And we actually had some issues here in the town as well. So, we wanted to make sure that we were prepared and get a presentation kind of on where we are and how we respond to that. So, thank you all for coming this evening. We really appreciate it and look forward to hearing what you have to say.
No, our pleasure. I'm the operations chief for Davie Fire Rescue, Chris Abramczek. This is Senior Forest Ranger, Tim Abramczek. So, same last name, maybe, maybe related. Okay, so, we wanted to take the time to come educate the community, educate the council, see if there's any questions to be asked besides education. Hopefully, we could put some minds at ease after what happened in California. Good evening. As your fire rescue department, our top priority is keeping you safe, especially from the growing risk of wildland fires in the urban wildland interface, also known as a UWI. Tonight, we're going to discuss the fire risks in our area, lessons learned from California, and how we can work together to prevent and respond to wildfires effectively. Understanding the risks, while we may not experience the same massive wildfires as the West Coast did, South Florida still faces wildfire threats. Fires can spread rapidly due to dry conditions during wildfire season, which we're experiencing currently, high winds that fuel the direct flames, and local vegetation such as sawgrass, pine rocklands, and cypress forests. The greatest concern is fires reaching the homes and businesses in the UWI zone, where natural vegetation meets developed land, and it makes it critical to manage risks before the fire starts. So, some of the lessons that we learned in California. Recent fires in California, such as in the Palisades Fire, have shown just how fast and unpredictable wildfires in the urban wildland areas can be. Key challenges they faced were they had long response times due to access, reduced water supply in fire zones, extreme wind conditions like the Santa Ana winds, which intensified the spread, and intense heat convection creating firestorms. So, some of the key takeaways for Southwest Ranches is we try for early detection, creating defensible space around buildings helps slow the fire spread. A fast coordinated response is essential to saving lives and property. While Southwest Ranches is fortunate to have less vegetation density than the fire prone California, our proximity to the Everglades still presents significant risks. A quick organized response still remains critical. How our fire rescue department responds is although our firefighters are primarily trained in structural firefighting, we collaborate closely with our partners in the Forest Service who specialize in wildland fires. Also, since the mid 2000s, anyone who goes through the fire academy and gets certified also gets wildland, at least some education in it. Our capabilities include large capacity engines carrying up to, we generally, all of our newer engines carry 1,000 gallons of water for initial fire suppression, and the pumps can pump up to 1,500 gallons per minute. A well-coordinated hydrant and firewell system that allows us to pump or draft large amounts of water as needed. You guys are different than most areas because you, the fire hydrants are spread throughout, but there's fire wells throughout. One great thing about it is the fire wells typically draw from the Biscayne aquifer, which covers like about 4,000 square miles of water. So, some of the stories that we heard, and I don't know what's true and what's not in the news anymore, about their limited water and reservoirs not being filled, you guys don't have that same problem here, okay? That although you don't have like a positive pressure fire hydrant, our trucks suck out of the wells, and it's limitless amounts of water. If they're not drawing from the aquifer, they're drawing from the Griff row canal, we're not going to have the same issues that they had there. We annually test your fire wells, which we're currently doing. It began this week in February. So, we test them annually to make sure that they're in working condition and there's no sediments that got in the way when a fire happens. Mutual aid agreements we also have with the county, state, local agencies give us access to helicopters and air support, specialized wildland equipment like the Florida Fire Service, Forest Service, sorry, specialized brush trucks and wildland engines designed for rough terrain access. You can also, or the Florida Forest Service can do controlled burns to reduce the fire loads before they start. Ways that you guys can help in the community is fire safety is a team effort. Here's what we can do to help. Create a defensible space, so keep vegetation trimmed and remove dead plants and leaves and debris. Maintain about 30 feet of clear space around your home. Harden your home, use fire resistant materials for roofing and siding, and keep gutters and vents clear of flammable debris. Also, stay informed, follow fire alerts and weather conditions, especially during dry seasons, and have an evacuation plan if needed. Wildland fires are a real threat, but together we can help reduce the risks and protect lives. We encourage everyone in the community to stay proactive, prepared, and informed. We're here to help, so please reach out with any questions or concerns. Thank you for your time, and let's work together to keep Southwest Ranches safe.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions from the council?
Great job.
No, our pleasure. Florida Forest Service is here if you guys have any questions, but we do have a, I mean, I have a personal connection, but we have a good working relationship with the Florida Forest Service where if something's brewing, I mean, like typically, yes, the Everglades are on fire. It happens naturally with lightning strikes. They don't put it out. They monitor it to make sure it's not jumping the levees or 27, okay? And then, we talk all the time, and he's very involved with the training committee of all the fire departments in Broward County, so we definitely have a good relationship with them.
Great. I do have a question related to it, and it's, we have, if a resident wants to have a burn for one reason or another, they get a permit, and I think it goes through the forest. Can you just explain how that, because I get a lot of questions about that.
That's a good question. So, if anybody wants to do a burn, it's got to be agriculture. You've got to go through us, you call our dispatch, we have a number, and then they'll send us to go out there and survey it. I make sure they have setbacks and everything, but it's got to go through the right process. And then, it gets to them, they put like the right wind direction, they make sure everything's right, and they have to call every day, they'll get a number. Call in the number, some days you can burn, some days you can't, but yes, you have to go through that process. It's got to meet the right thing. It can't be stuff brought in and dumped and burned there. It's got to be agriculture.
Gotcha. And what is the-
Agriculture, sorry, Steve.
Well, you can't just, a lot of problems, a lot of people will start a burn and then come bring, you know, stuff from other properties. It's got to be there.
So, it's got to be trees.
Yeah, it's got to be trees off that area to be cleared.
Got it. Thank you.
And if somebody's going to do that, what's the best contact, is there a contact number that they should-
Yes, I'll give you my card, you can contact, which is our dispatch. They'll call us, we'll go out there, and we'll say yes, no, because it's so built up here, it is very, very difficult to do any burning.
Right.
Miami does a lot, but now, the past couple of years, it's getting less and less. So, obviously, that's what we're doing, is very, very difficult to do even a prescribed burning for us. It is very, very difficult because we're so built up, this stuff's got to go somewhere. You know you're going to get everybody not happy, so it's got to be setbacks, especially if you live next to a school, a hospital, there's a lot of regulations with that, that they have to meet.
Perfect. Good. Thank you.
Mayor, I do have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
You mentioned the wells. What happens if you find a well that does have sediment? Do they get to the point where you can't use them anymore and a new one has to be put in? Are you able to clean those?
The personnel that are testing it report it, and I believe there's a contractor that they call to either make repairs or clean out the sediment. So, if the sediment that's in there, generally, the large pump that we're using is going to suck it out, but some of the wells do deteriorate and crack, and they have to be replaced. There, I think, I don't remember the name of the contractor, but there is personnel out there that do make the repairs. But they do inform us so that our personnel are aware that this well at this address is not in a working order in case tomorrow we respond to a call that we know to look for the next closest one.
They replaced one in my neighborhood. They drove a whole new well in the ground, and it took time.
Wow.
Sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, for ISO, I was responsible. We had to install 10 wells in Davie, and I think they drilled thousands of feet down to hit the aquifer, because they want to make sure that they're hitting it where we're going to get ample quantities of water when needed, because otherwise, it's not going to get the rating that you're looking for.
Yeah, the one by me was 50, 60 feet, and there was rotary. It was a drill, they didn't pound it in like they used to do with the wells.
So, even though it's different, like not a lot of areas have wells, I mean, there is a benefit to it.
Right.
So-
Never run out of water.
No. No, we're not going to run out of water.
Yeah.
Plus, we have good working relationships. You guys are members of the fastest unit response, so mutual aid, so it's not just Davie. Everyone's going to come and just get to work.
Great.
I had a Forest Service question real quick.
Sure.
Have you guys ever responded to a fire within the town itself, or you're pretty much west of 27?
So, we respond everywhere in Broward. Our station is off of 27 and Sheridan, so you guys are really lucky.
We own the property right next to you.
Yeah. Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're right there, so you guys are perfect area.
Yep.
But we go to fires. Our area we cover is Deerfield Beach Line all the way down to Chrome.
Wow.
So, it's a big, big area. I work with a lot, a lot of fire departments. This is an excellent thing, what we're doing here, getting you guys knowledge what you need to do. So, yes, I responded to areas fires here all over, so you name it. I've been there all the way out east on the beach in the Magna Grove, fighting fire. So, everybody's got to be prepared and educated for this, so this is perfect. I don't only fight fire here during the summer, I do bring a lot of experience. I go out west and fight those fires also, so I got a lot of experience.
Great.
So-
Awesome.
Thank you.
Let me just open it up to the public, if there's anybody in the public that has any questions. Anybody? If you do, come on up to the mic.
I used to be friendly with the former trainer for the volunteer fire department, and he told me, one of the big problems is pulling off the wells, the seals on the trucks. It seems like the way they get rotated around throughout Davie, they're used to working off a pressurized system, and then when they got to draw themselves, they have the pumping capacity and all that, but you know, vacuum can be very tricky to pull. I just went through doing my well. It's a pain in the butt. Any little leak at all in vacuum gets magnified nine times the problems with the pressure side. So, I was just curious if, like a routine rotation for a pumper truck down the road here, if they do, check it out and make sure that they can make a draw off of a firewall. And I don't know how you get to the aquifer 20 or 30 feet down. I thought you'd have to go several hundred feet down, but I'm sure he knows.
Thanks, Jim. Okay.
Well, anyway.
Yeah.
That's my point.
Thank you.
To answer the question, we train continuously on fire wells. One of the portions of our specific driver engineer test is to be able to train on fire wells. And if you speak to or see any of the crews out here, that's kind of one of the main things that they always hit. Yeah, he's right about the seals. There's O-rings in this hard suction hose that can dry rot, but we carry extra O-rings, and the trucks get pump tested annually, the hose gets pump tested, gets tested annually, and they just rent our training all the time. So, they're competent in hitting the fire well and drawing from it. He's right. Like if you have a leak, the suction doesn't, it doesn't work.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, Gloria.
Stupid question. Yeah, it is. We have a neighbor that, well, around Christmas time-
Gloria, can you please speak in the mic, please? Thank you.
Hello.
There it is.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. We have a neighbor, at Christmas time, they like to burn Christmas trees in their backyard. I mean, now, we have big backyards, and he's got it all covered with bricks and things so that, but that doesn't apply to these rules, does it? Or like having fire pits and we have big bonfires?
Having a fire pit.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that's beyond that, yeah, and burning a bunch of Christmas trees, yeah. Well, he does. Okay.
Thank you.
They have hoses around, and they watch them, and they don't let the fires get high, but yeah, I've seen a few get high. Okay.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
If we get called out for an outside fire comes in, as I know that we got a couple last weekend, it was a little cooler, people opened their windows, and people were also burning. If we respond, we tell them that they need to put it out unless they have a permit, you know. When they talk about controlled, they're talking about much smaller than what generally happens. We, as the fire department, don't fine, I believe that would be a code enforcement matter, but we would ask the resident to put it out.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming out. Really appreciate it, and appreciate all that you do to keep us safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a very special event coming up in June, and we have an individual here who, Susan, please come up, and we have our birthday party coming up on June 7th, and Susan is doing just an amazing job coordinating us all, organizing us all, and putting all the excitement behind it. Thank you for all you're doing. Tell us about how the plans are and what we're doing.
Well, good evening.
Please, into the mic, please.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, it's a lot of fun, and just so residents know that this is no cost to them, I am raising money from businesses that we have here that take up a lot of Southwest Ranches and asking them for donations. I do want to talk about this evening, about the parade. On the parade, we actually, we just had the letter that's going to go out to the residents by Avocado and Mather, because it might affect some of those residents on Mather and Avocado. So, we just want to get them aware. The police will be there, so there's not going to be any kind of issue, but it's nice to let them know, you know, that there is going to be something going on there. They could join in if they want to also. So, the lineup will be on Mather, and it'll be 9 o'clock, and then it's going to start going to the park. And so far, we have many businesses that are joining in, so it's going to be a lot of fun. Some of the wet slides that we are having will be using a lot of generators and electricity and stuff like that, so we, of course, have to have the inspector come and make sure everything's going to be okay. We are also having dry slides too for the people that don't want to get wet. We're also having a big tent and with missing fans, so people can enjoy and be cool too, and it's a lot, as you could see, there's a lot of water slides and a lot of fun, and the food is, for residents, is no cost, so it'll be a fun, fun day.
It's going to be exciting. It's going to be exciting. You may not know it, but Susan has this notebook like, it's not like this thick with all the details and everything that's going on, so it's pretty awesome.
Yeah. A lot of people are very responsive.
Awesome.
It's nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Public comment? We have any public comment this evening?
Good evening, Mayor. There are three speakers tonight. Gloria Murphy is first, Lisa Sharon is second, and Jim Lasky is third.
Good evening, everybody. Now, please, listen to me. Watch me when I'm talking, okay? And I only have three minutes, so I wrote it all out so I wouldn't miss anything.
Please state your name and your address.
Oh, I'm Gloria Murphy. I live on 164th where it's being torn up like crazy right now.
Okay.
My thoughts on the farmer's market and the possible pavilion. The area for a farmer's market is great, however, prices are getting higher and farmers' products are getting smaller and smaller. I don't go to a farmer's market for cheap jewelry and clothes. I thought it was to be operated by locals for locals with local products. This is not a flea market, or is it meant to be? I don't know. Is it? Decent restrooms are necessary, but that's it. That area would be too noisy and too close to streets and neighbors for a pavilion. What is wrong with the barn in Rolling Oaks? You're having your 25th party there. The barn is great for functions, has a good rural appearance, and is in a good area, and then there is the horse park and the fishing hole. Why does a town of 7,000 need another big pavilion? I don't understand. Why spend all this money on a new pavilion at taxpayers' expense when it isn't necessary? My perception is that we need our roads repaved before we talk about a pavilion. I don't care how many grants are at issue, and these must be, there must be a grant somewhere for road paving. Our roads are in dire straits. Which brings me to more about our roads and the drainage projects. Our roads are disgusting, and they need to be repaved, and the drainage project is making them even worse. We now have more ruts than before. Now that they have dug up our yards and road to install the pipes and cable, we have not been told when this will be finished, and they are digging them up again, for what? I don't know. My front yard has now been dug up three times. We have lived here for over 30 years, and now we're going to wake up in the morning, look out our front window, and see two large cement drainage slabs. That's rural? I believe our residents would rather have a good road system than another pavilion or this unneeded drainage for our front yards that don't flood. At least, I would hope. We are 7,000 residents, not Cooper City nor Weston, and people who move here know that, and if they don't, shame on them for not doing the research before moving here. We are rural, and we want to stay that way. No streetlights, no sidewalks, and plenty of farm animals. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Gloria.
Lisa Sharon, 5960 Southwest 172nd Avenue. Good evening, Mayor Steve.
Good evening.
Russell, town council members. I would like to discuss the right-of-way, and if I could kind of come full circle for a couple of seconds. I purchased vacant land with a 45-foot easement, and during my build-out, Southwest Ranches converted the easement to a right-of-way. So, at one point, I actually had to give 45 feet of land to Southwest Ranches, and during this time, I had to pay $750 for a survey, I had to pay the taxes before I gave it over, and if I'm not mistaken, I think I had to pay for it to get recorded. So, now that we're kind of working together for me to get my land back, I've been dealing with Jeff Katums, and he recently sent me a vacation of easement or unplanted right-of-way application, and with that, a fee for $6,250 for me to get my land back. So, he also stated that it could be less, it could be more, but this is, you know, the price that was in the email. So, I was just hoping to, I don't know, have you guys give me some guidance to connect the dots and to see if this is the way to go or the only way to go, but I would definitely appreciate some guidance. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lisa.
Jim Lasky, 188th Avenue. We got this clown of a contractor called Comcast that's running cables up and down 188th Avenue. I don't know if any of you have personal knowledge about Comcast, but it's absolutely one of the worst performing companies for uptime you could have for the internet. I had him down in Doral on 58th Street, a very heavily utilized through a way through there for internet service. We had so many businesses and everything else on that road, you would expect better service. I even knew a guy that was a manager of Comcast who gave me a great deal, but no service. Now, they're going down 188th Avenue, and I don't know if you've ever looked at a set of the plans that they're currently trying to work, work on, but they've missed a block in their plans. They don't know what the hell they're doing. If you go talk to the people, they will admittedly tell you, the contractors stay hired. If you look at the equipment they're using, you're going to shake your head and say, where did they get these guys? You know, they got little pull ropes, but they keep putting knots in them because they keep breaking. I mean, these guys, just look at their drawings, and you'll see how confused they are because the guy that gave them the drawings missed a block. They told me this, the supervisor that's not there anymore. I guess maybe he talked too much. But you got to do something. We shouldn't be forced to accept, you know, somebody that's got a franchise in this town without a little bit of scrutiny. I mean, I think you heard somebody, the last meeting, talk about the permit and the chemicals, and I can't imagine that to be very accurate with directional drilling, but you know, the floor powering light guy that did the cable I complained about in front of my house, they didn't use any lubricant at all in directional boring. You got to use that stuff. Otherwise, you should see the samples of the conduit I got. You wonder how it stayed intact, but it did break. That's why they had to dig it up and fix it. So, what I'm saying is accurate, anybody with a little bit of training can see what I'm talking about. Let them run it underground. And then, the other thing I want to bring up is the safety point. You got the center part of those cables that they're running is copper. The outside jacket, it has an aluminum shield, probably for interference or something. But the fact is, when you run them and you do splices up against one of those transformers in a flood situation, what happens if there's a problem with the transformer and you get a leap in voltage through the cable system and everybody's electronics gets burnt all the way through the house? You've probably never been in a building that was hit by lightning where you saw your whole network get fried. That's what happens. You have to have independent grounds just for your IT department.
Yep. Thank you, Jim. Any other public comment? Great. Thank you. Public comment closed. All right. Board reports. Do we have any board reports this evening?
Since I'm the only one here from the task force, I guess it's unanimous that I do it. I gave you guys a couple of weeks ago, a couple of ideas that I had.
This is, are you talking about the Broward Task Force or the Town Board Zero Waste?
The Broward Task Force.
Yeah, that's, that would be during, during public comment. I thought you were talking about the Zero Waste Board here in town.
You know, Debbie used to do it.
She does for the zero waste.
Well, I'm doing it for the zero waste then.
Okay.
All right.
Go for it.
I did give you guys a couple of ideas I had. I didn't put all of them in there because there's too many people watching, but we really need to get some money to fight this thing. I can tell by your reaction, Steve, on what's coming ahead for us, and we already got waylaid with the county on Monarch Park. That's dangerous stuff. It's in a hurricane zone. Anybody that knows that those particles that are on that mound are subject to wind, all kinds of wind from different angles and variable winds, depending on whether the hurricane comes from the west or the east or the south, and they all do seem to work that way. But we got to get together with some experts, and I'm getting off cheap by the budget I gave you, but I'm very disappointed that nobody can even ask me some questions about what I intend to do in the long run. That's why I'm going to suggest to you that we have a confidential meeting, much like a Shades session. That's why I'm going to suggest to you that we have a confidential meeting, much like a Shade's session, where I can speak to you guys and not speak to the TV set and anybody else that may be listening. But we're gonna get screwed in the long run if we don't do something now. And then what are you gonna do? Sue? Well, if we already have the experts together and we gave the proper warnings, it's going to be a lot easier. I think Keith will agree that if you're forewarned, okay, of the possible dangers by people that really got credibility, all right, it's going to be hard for them to defend that action, and they're not doing a damn thing to address those problems that they're facing. How can a landfill make a contribution to a political candidate?
Yep.
I mean, really, would you have a check from a landfill, go to a guy that's making a decision for everybody's behalf? That looks pretty bad. I'm not one to accuse people of being funny or anything like that without proof, but that's hard to refute, and they didn't refute it at the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. All right. Councilmember comments. You'd like to go first?
I'll go first.
All right. Thanks, Gary.
Don't give everybody time for their thoughts. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Just, it's a short meeting we have going today. I just want to throw out some stuff that's going on, coming up. This Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at the barn, we have the Astronite Memorial being put on by the family. Those of you who wish to attend, be there by 10:00 a.m. We have a new date for hazmat at the park. It's going to be the May 3rd. It'll have shredding and drug prescription drop-off by the town of Davie. The 26th of March is Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the barn. We're going to have, or the women's group is putting on a memorial and a tree planting for Debbie Goff Rose. So if anybody would like to attend, it's 6:00 to 8:00 on the 26th. We also have, on a lighter note, Bingo coming up for the Parks Department, Parks, excuse me, Parks Foundation on March 22nd. It's $30 and it includes dinner. I believe it starts around 6:00 p.m. We have the BCPA, Broward County Property Appraiser, on the first Tuesday of the month from 10:00 to 12:00 here at Town Hall, and they also have an individual in charge of ag who can answer any of your questions that you may have concerning that. Happy to report that the Education Advisory Board Barn Dance is sold out. So if you've got tickets, great. And it's being sponsored by Outpack again, and I want to thank them again for their generous donation. This is about the third or fourth year in a row that they've done that. Coming up on the April 5th is the 5K at the barn again, starts at 6:30 in the morning. And it's a great event. I urge everybody to sign up for it. The monies all go to the Scholarship Fund for the Education Advisory Board. We have Water Matters on March 8th. This year's kind of special. December will be representing us, and we're going to be presented the Emerald Award for Rolling Oaks Park. It'll be our third one, which is really fantastic, and a lot of hard work went into earning that, and we need to commend her for it because she was in charge of that.
She does amazing work.
Good job. Great job. The DMV Flowmobile will be here on March 26th at Town Hall. No, is that Town Hall? Yeah. It's here in the dais for now. I used to have a van, but now it's here, I believe. See Deborah for an appointment. She's our town clerk. Just call the town clerk and make your appointment. It's a wonderful service put on by Broward County, and it saves you a tremendous amount of time going down. You don't have to go downtown for your needs from DMV. Our 25th Silver Anniversary Birthday Party, whatever you want to call it. Susan is working on that, and we've got a list of stuff that's going on with that. It's going to be quite a day and quite a celebration. I would like to mention that there's going to be a barbecue there, and it's free to the residents. So there's going to be water slides and the parade and all kinds of games, and there's music and large tents. There's going to be a lot going on that day, and it starts, I believe, at 10:00 a.m. They also have a shuttle service for the riders that have to do with the parade. So Susan will firm that up and explain that more later as we get closer, and that's going to be in June, on June 7th. And then on April 13th, we get visited by the Easter Bunny at Rolling Oaks Park for the annual Rolling Oaks Egg Hunt, which opened up to the whole town. The pictures with the bunny start at 11:00 o'clock, and the actual egg hunt usually starts right around 12:00. So I just want to put that out there. That's April 13th. I believe that's a Saturday. Last thing I want to mention is, I talked about this the last meeting regarding home-based businesses, which really are not, take the word "home" out of it, and I'm going to talk about it every meeting. I'm pretty sure you guys realize where I'm going with this. I think it's a bigger problem than the Airbnbs, a problem as big as Phil, and we need to, I think we need to look at it in a very logical and intelligent way. And we have need to consider the code department to be part of the solution, you know, for this because within my neighborhood alone, within a quarter, half a mile of my house, there's six of them. And they're, I mean, they're huge.
Right.
You know, and it's something that's not being, what's the word I'm looking for? It's not being hidden, or they're not being respectful to their neighbors or anything like that. And I completed a survey of Rolling Oaks. I went pothole hunting last week and just gave the map, a whole map of Rolling Oaks where all the potholes and the shoulders are that need to be repaired in Rolling Oaks. And if you want to, if any of you want to see what heavy traffic of trucks do to a road, I urge you to go on Sterling Road in Rolling Oaks where ProScape goes. The road is completely destroyed. It's not potholes. It's not, it looks like an earthquake had gone through there from Mather Boulevard, 178th, all the way to the end. It literally, on both sides of the road, is just all spider cracks of, for lack of a better way of saying it. No potholes. It's just going to fall apart on us.
This is Mather?
It needs to be, like, completely repaved.
Now, the road off of Mather's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, you really got to see it. I was shocked.
Yeah.
And I lived there. I was totally shocked that it was in that bad a shape. And so we're dealing with this problem, and it's only going to get worse and worse as people, as businesses come out and buy properties, and then they turn it into trucking establishments. And, you know, we've got one that's a gas station management company that has generators, huge generators, the kind that run whole buildings, like we have on the side of our building, on trailers, you know, down the street, stuff like that. And I'll close with that for now, Mayor.
Yeah, I want to pick up on that if I can. What I'd like to do is, Russell, I'd like to find a, one of our town council meetings in May or June where we can specifically clear the deck and have a, really a workshop on this item. Not that we're not going to take any votes. We're not going to, you know, change the world in that meeting, but I really want to get resident input and see if we can carve out a path forward. Gary, I think I admire and I appreciate what you're saying. I'm on board 100% with what you're saying. It's a real issue for our town. Thank you for, you know, taking it and pushing it forward.
We need to address because it's only going to get worse.
Right.
As things go along.
And I think it's going to take a full evening. I don't, you know, I don't want to mix it with anything else. Let's have a workshop and let's, as a town, let's come together and see what we got to do.
Yeah, let me jump in on this as well. I mean, great idea because a week doesn't go past now where I don't get a phone call. You know, when I came here, when we formed the town, I thought the idea of a home-based business was you have an attorney who works from home. I got one of them on my street. We got a guy who's a Bitcoin trader. He has people come to see him, but it's one person at a time. It's not 20 or 30. We also have crew work on our street where eight or 10 cars show up in the morning. Nobody's happy with that.
Right.
They're all starting to call Bob to say, hey, you guys got rid of the vet. We have a similar problem brewing here. Now, I've talked to the guy, and he's under warning. We have another home-based business, which I don't think was the intent, where food trucks are parked on one guy's lot. You know, this is not the intent. So we've got to get back to basics.
We've got to get it under control.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, the whole living that live, it's really being taken advantage of.
Well, that's it. It's not living that live anymore. I mean, we say that at so many meetings. That's our intention. That's why we only have five proactive code enforcement items. People are wiggling around those and really upsetting the neighborhoods. So, good. Great idea, Steve.
Good. Yeah, no, and thanks, Gary, for bringing that up. All right, who'd like to go next?
I'll continue on. I'll be really brief tonight. I just want to put another advertisement out there for the trip to the recycling plant out on US 27. It's the Ruder Plant, which is owned by WM. The trip is planned for Thursday, March 20th, at 10:00 in the morning, 10 until 11:30. If you haven't been there and you are interested in recycling, which we should all be at this point, come on out with us because it's interesting to see what goes in. And then the commodities that come out the back end, like aluminum cans and steel and plastic and paper and all that. It's a very interesting process. So if you're interested in coming, send me an email, give me a call, whatever works for you, send me a text. I also wanted to bring up the, I didn't catch her name, although she's been here multiple times. Yeah, Lisa, thank you. It amazes me that she had to pay to give it to us, and now she has to pay to get it back.
Yeah, I'm going to speak about that.
Well, I don't know if we can waive the $6,000.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Because this is, we like to be fair.
Right.
And this doesn't seem very fair that we took it and it's costing her a lot of money to get it back.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that up. I was going to bring it up, but I'm glad, super glad that you did. There is a mixture of fees. Some of it is our fees, some of it is the county or other entities' fees. So the question, I certainly want us to waive all of the fees that come to the town itself. And if we can do something to help support, you know, I don't want to, I want to be careful not to set a precedent.
Sure.
But in this particular case, we told her she had to do this, and now we're giving the opportunity to undo it. And it's just, you know, it was, so anything we can do, I definitely would like to see us waive our fees if we can do something to help out with the others. But I wanted to get everybody's, everybody weighing in on that and make sure we were all on the same page before.
Good. It just doesn't sound right to me.
It doesn't sound right to me either. I don't know. Does anybody else want to?
I would agree to it.
You're okay with that?
I'd be on board on that.
Yeah. Jim?
Circumstances are pretty tough.
Yeah, Mayor, the idea sounds great, but one caveat or question I've got is, you know, are we paying for her attorney to do that? You know, I mean, you're going to get those kind of sticky, wicked questions.
Six hours, we're coming from Jeff. We're talking about the fees that were, like, in Jeff's email or letter to her.
Understood.
That's not attorney fees.
No, I understand. That would be a town expense then. But we got, the idea is to completely vacate Sterling Road from there, from 166th to 27.
Right.
Correct. Okay, so we're going to have a lot of those coming up, so we need to.
And that's what I want to be clear. We're not setting a precedent. In this case, we said, hey, give it to us. Now we got to give it back, right? That's a very unique situation. As we look further west, some of that property is already ours, so, you know, it would be the owner's opportunity to just give it back. Others, we don't, it's theirs. We certainly don't want to take it in the future. Keith?
Yeah, I just have a question because I'm wondering what portion, if any, of this can be done administratively. Mrs. Sharon just, and I don't know, I remember this case, but I don't know this case. I just want to say that for the record. She claimed that she had an easement and that when it went through her permitting that the town, I'm sure engineering, requested that it changed from an easement to a right-of-way, and she dedicated the right-of-way. The way I understand it, you just want to undo the process.
Correct.
And change the right-of-way back to an easement.
Correct.
So if that's the case, from my perspective, you're not giving up the public use of it under the law because you're still maintaining it as an easement. You're just saying she gets to own it, but the town has a right to use that as an easement. So if that's all the county wants, and she's correct, and I haven't looked into the veracity of the statement, you know, basically, it would just be a simple resolution saying converting the right-of-way back to an easement and moving forward.
I thought that some things were registered with the, or went to the county and needed to be undone.
Yeah, recorded.
My understanding in speaking with Jeff is that this has been totally vacated, and if you look at her property line right now, you'll see that the property is now, the property that's in question is actually now in town right-of-way now.
Right, but I'm telling you.
In order to vacate that right-of-way, I thought we were directed by, or the understanding is that Jeff Cadums is saying that it has to be done through the vacation process.
Can I look into that answer?
Absolutely.
I understand what the council's wanting. They want to maintain an easement on that property instead of having a dedicated right-of-way so that Mrs. Sharon understands the town will still have an easement over that. But you would have the property as your property, but the town would have the right for utilities and the like. I assume that's what you're looking for.
Lisa, could you please come up to the mic just for a second? I just want to make sure we're all in agreement before we have a plan of action here.
No.
What you're hearing here is, are you in alignment with that, or is there, do you have any different thought?
No, I'm definitely very thankful for this conversation. I have new construction beside me, which is 5970, and then we have someone who's been there for many years, 5950. All of us collectively, pretty much at the same time, closed in our property. So where the property line is, all of us are all closed in now. So in terms of an easement, you know, prior to the right-of-way, when I was planning to put a fence, we would have had to have brought it in 45 feet.
Right.
But as you know, it's been a little bit of a mess from the beginning, even with the trees and all of that, so.
Correct. Okay, but you're okay if we can do the, and leave the easement in place?
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay.
I charged you $6,000.
Where's the $6,500 come from?
Well, so let's do this. Let's do this. Let's do this. Let me just kind of sum this up if I can. So I think we're all in agreement that any of those fees that we can eliminate, we would like to eliminate. If we can simplify the process, Keith, I really appreciate you jumping in there and being willing to take a look at this. If you can take a look at it and we can smooth out the path and not even incur those fees, that would be even better. Are we good with that?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. That's.
Okay.
Perfect. So one question, if I may?
Sure.
So in the meantime, I have the application partially filled out, but.
Why don't you hold off just for a little bit?
Hold off.
I promise you, someone from the town staff will get back to you next week on this.
Okay.
But because from my perspective, and this is why I was telling Russell, from a legal perspective, I'm sure Councilmember Kuzinski will agree, we're not giving up all of our rights. All we're saying is we're transposing it from a right-of-way to an easement, so it's not a vacation. So that's what I want to look into really quickly.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. All right. So let's just kind of put a hold on what you're doing for the next week, and hopefully we'll get this cleaned up.
I'll wait to hear back from you.
Thank you.
All right.
And thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
All right, just one last thing to close. Keith, I have a question for you. I've only been involved in a couple of Shade sessions, and I understand they're for very, very specific things. One of our residents asked for a Shade session so he didn't have to disclose some proprietary ideas. Is that legal?
No.
Okay.
If you want to know the exact answer, under the law, a Shade session can only be the town council, the attorney, town administrator, clerk opens and closes the meeting, and it's only on active litigation, threatened litigation, or union negotiations. Those are the limited items.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
I'll be real quick. Thank you, folks, for coming out. Point out, this beautiful rancher, Susan's done an amazing job.
She's the editor.
Yeah, I was looking at this, and I was like, wow, what a great product. And I really want to thank Susan. You did a real, real, real good job on this. Remind, folks, that within about three months or so, hurricane season's going to begin, so start trimming your trees. Don't wait until the last minute. Keep up with recycling. No pizza boxes, no plastic bags, no styrofoam. And that does it for me.
Wow.
Yep.
Wow, impressive. Thank you, David.
I'm trying to get out of here.
Where are we?
Jim, it's up to you, buddy.
I won't be that short, but I will be short. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, real quick, I had the opportunity to attend the Broad League of Cities and the state, uh, representatives' meeting, uh, this past week along with Russell. And what the state representatives are asking the towns and municipalities for is a more detailed, uh, outlay when you apply for something, when you apply for, uh, grants or when you apply for, uh, different things. They want, uh, kind of a cheat sheet, or I guess you'd call it, so when they look at it, they don't have to read a hundred and ten pages. And they said that this session here, and I may be completely wrong, but I don't think so, that they are looking to overturn some of the things that were vetoed last session or the session before. And some of those items are ours. We have a couple guardrail projects and stuff that may be looked at again, so that'd be real great for Southwest Ranches. Broad League of City had two things that they brought up that they were worried about. First being, I think most of y'all heard, that they may, uh, or they want to increase the, um, to seventy-five thousand dollars, your property, uh, homestead exemption, uh, exemption there that, that's there. So, instead of twenty-five, it'd, it'd now be, uh, probably a hundred, or seventy-five to a hundred. That sounds great for the residents, but you got to stop and think what it'll do to the town. That town, uh, the money the town gets for that, most of the town, I'm not sure if we do it, but I think we do, is used for our fire and police department and so forth. To make that money up would be very difficult. So, the Broad League of Cities is asking them to really look at that hard before they pass that. And the other one here, I never knew what sovereign immunity was, but if somebody gets hurt on town property or county property, or if they get hurt by an employee of the town, before this, uh, it's currently a hundred thousand, three hundred thousand maximum suit, they want to increase that to one million, three million. And that can very well break a small town like us. Hollywood said, for example, that they had three million dollars in revenue set aside for that. By that current rate, that'd be ten people suing them at a maximum of three hundred thousand. With this new rule, one person would break them. I'm not sure what we have in reserve, but I think that would be something that the town, uh, wouldn't look favorable on, raising it from one million to three million. And then last, I'm making headway on the school bus stop on Dykes. I had a meeting this past week, uh, with, uh, Dr. Clowers, the Director of Transportation, I spoke to her on the phone. And she sent to me, our representative, Ms. Rebecca Thompson, we met there this past Tuesday at six fifteen in the morning, walked and, and saw the site, watched the students get on the bus, talked to the bus driver. Bus driver was very good. She come to the bottom step and wanted to ask who we were, ask if we had any ID. That was really impressive. She was worried about people being there with the students. It's dark. The students that are currently on the bus walk one block north alongside Griffin Road, right alongside. You know how teenagers are, got their earphones in, they got the phone in their hand, not paying a bit of attention. Cars coming through there, Ms. Rebecca Thompson, uh, and the fellow I met today, Mr. Vincent, also saw probably eight or ten cars go through there, and I guarantee you, they're running over sixty, seventy mile an hour. They're flying through there early in the morning. So, I asked Russell if he'd help with the detail to come there early in the morning, say from six to eight and start writing tickets. So, maybe we'd be able to do that. But this, uh, the, this bus stop there, we need a guardrail. Don't need a slab. We talked about putting a slab. The street is a very nice street to stand on. They just have to stand back off of Griffin. We have, uh, according with Gary, we have the new signs, the speed limit signs that you see, the new digital speed limit signs. Gary has been gracious to give up the ones that go into Roland Oaks, so I now have four that I can place. One will be, if I can get approved with the town and stuff, to put it on Dykes Road, facing northbound at that particular site. Behind, I'm hoping a guardrail can get put up, uh, to say, you know, to help the students. And, uh, on that, I'd like to see a sign that says, uh, a slow down school bus zone. That would make the people slow down. They'd still think that maybe they were in a school zone, even though the sign reads, you know, speed limit forty mile an hour. But that is a very dangerous road and, uh, I'm making headway. I met with Mr. Vincent today. He is the direct, the Deputy Director of Transportation. He spoke to the students about moving back off of Griffin Road, but like I said, you know how teenagers are. Got their headphones on, they got their phone in front of them and I don't think they bit more, paid them any attention than a man and a moon. And, uh, they looked at him and smiled and said, okay, and got on the bus. But if we can do something there at that particular intersection to help these children, uh, be a little bit safer in the mornings, uh, I think I'd really greatly appreciate it. And with that, I got, that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Jim. Um, you all did an amazing job of going through your comments very quickly. Unfortunately, I'm going to balance that out the other way, so I apologize upfront. I've got a bunch of items I want to cover. Yeah, exactly. Um, okay, the first couple of quick ones up front, um, Barn Dance, thank you for bringing that up. And the fact that Outback is providing all of that, that meal for us, please thank Outback. And how do we thank Outback? We go to Outback and thank them. They've done, I mean, to think about that, they're feeding like a hundred-plus people there, absolutely free for us. So, they've been a great partner for years and years and years for us. Uh, it's a great restaurant and I hope that, uh, like myself, you'll go out there and thank them personally. The Rancher Academy is coming up on March twelfth and March nineteenth. Um, please come out and check that out. I really want to hear from residents, uh, that have been there to be able to tell us kind of how to improve it, things that we are good at, things that we need to get better at. The goal of this, and this came up earlier in the meeting, the goal of this is really to educate both Realtors and new residents on who we are, um, before they even get here. Um, or if they're already here, to help educate really what the rural lifestyle is about, why we don't want sidewalks, why we have dark skies, why we have those unusual chicken, those unusual animal sounds and smells that maybe not everybody else has. And so, um, so that's, it's really important to help being, to helping us be proactive about our rural lifestyle rather than always reactive to things. So, that's March twelfth and March nineteenth. Please put it on your calendar. Uh, please sign up and come on out. What time?
Six, six to eight thirty.
Six to eight thirty. Thank you. All right. Um, Gloria, thank you for coming out. You always challenge us and you always, uh, bring up some interesting points. I do, I do unfortunately have to disagree with you on a couple of things, but that's why we're all neighbors is we get to, like, all express our opinions. So, um, I'll say this, I've been to flea markets and this ain't no flea market. The flea market is when you bring, you buy my junk and, and I buy your junk. And, uh, this is all good quality items, um, and, uh, a lot of it is, are, are interesting crafts, but a lot of it is, is different, like, like the honey, the spices, the, the, the juices, the things like that that are there along with, um, obviously the produce and other things that are there. So, there, there is a lot of, uh, farm-based things there. It's not all farm-based, but, uh, there is a lot there. So, I think, I think that the, the mixture is actually very good. Hey, we can all call it what we want to call it. It doesn't really fall into a flea market as far as I can see. But, um, so, interesting point about using the grant money for, uh, roads rather than that. Um, uh, super quick history lesson, you know, it was probably now, I don't know, ten, fifteen years ago that, um, it really started hitting me that we have a real issue in this town that our roads are deteriorating. It's creating a, a real liability for our town. We got to start doing something about it. And so, we came up with a plan, um, and, uh, and we've implemented that for Tisdore. And, but to your point, um, what the, and, and we started talking about this, the money that's allocated for that is not really enough to keep up with the roads and keep them in the shape that they need to be in. And so, I know that we're already talking about bumping that up and I think, uh, Gloria, to your point, we've got to, we've got to do better and we've got to find more funding for that. I will say that I, I, I will put our grant writer, Emily, against anybody else in South Florida. She is extremely successful in getting us money. She has gotten us money for road repairs in the past. But most grants are for new projects, not for maintenance-type projects. And so, it's very tough to get grant money for it. And so, but when we can get it, believe me, we get it. Um, this particular money that's going towards the restrooms, the facilities, the road that's going there, all the, the plumbing and everything else that's there, it's a lot more than just restrooms. Um, that's coming from the federal government, the ARPA program. It cannot go towards roads. It cannot, the America Recovery Rescue, there we go, Rescue. So, so this has come from federal, federal money, um, that we were able to apply to this project. And so, there's very, there's, there's, it's not something that we could apply to roads. So, I just wanted to clear that. I like, I like where you're going with it, but in this particular case, it, it can't apply.
Mayor, if I could, we, we have, uh, all those grant obligations that were applied to that park and that is the beginning of it, and this is the last park that we're, we're working on.
Right.
This is the first in a series of things that have to go into there.
It's a great point.
And we're about ten, ten, fifteen years behind.
Yeah.
On our obligations.
So, if we didn't apply these funds to it, then we would have to apply our own revenue, tax revenue to it to get it done. So, this is, this is actually a huge blessing to our town to be able to get this taken care of, get those obligations out of the way, as you say, great point. And also frankly, get a facility there that we can all use. Because that, that area, as this, um, gets developed, is going to be used for more and more things. So, I think that is going to be great. I did have a meeting. I had a great meeting this past week with, um, the contractor that's going to be doing the work and Rod was there, Russell was there, um, Emile was there. And, um, we talked through the project so that I could get a better understanding of, um, why this project is so expensive. And we did talk through it and looking at it, you know, we looked at all four bids that were there. We, we have a great contractor, you know, sometimes we don't go with the lowest bid because we're not comfortable with the contractor. In this particular case, we not only, um, took the lowest bid, but we took the best contractor. So, that was an awesome thing. And this, the price that, that the contractor came in at was actually slightly below what the estimate was when we first, um, did the plans and, and the architect gave us an estimate of what it should cost. So, so after that, and looking at, there was four other companies that bid for it and we, we started going through the different line items and realized that it's, it's, that's kind of a mix and match thing. Um, I feel much more comfortable that we are in fact getting value for what we're doing, um, there. And so, so I feel a lot better about it. I think this is a great opportunity to get this project done, get it in place, and it's going to serve us well, you know, not only for the farmer's market, but for the carnival and for that whole other area as we start to do more and more things and that, that, and we use that other area. So, it's going to be, um, I think this is going to be a really useful element for our town. All right, so, another topic here that I wanted to, I wanted to bring up is, um, potholes in town. So, this has been, this has been something that I've been, it definitely came out, you know, during the election. And, and that's one of the good things about elections is you really get to hear more and more from residents about what the issues really are and the things that, that are really, uh, need to be looked at and improved upon. And one of those things clearly was our roads and the number of potholes and things that we have there. And so, we're taking a fresh look at that. We've already adjusted the schedule so that the potholes get addressed, um, sooner and faster. And recognize that that's going to cost us a little bit more money, but it's worth it, you know, the residents are asking for it and so we need to do it. And, um, but one of the things that is a real sticking point, and it has been through the years, is because of the way the town was developed and came about, there are certain properties, and actually I'm one of them, where the property goes to the middle of the road. And so, that being the case, technically, that road is my property. It's private property. Now, there's a public right-of-way on it, so people drive across it every single day, but technically, that is private property. And the state of Florida says you cannot improve, as a public entity, you cannot improve private property. So, what does that mean? That means that we have people out there that, um, like I would, who's never fixed a pothole in their life, out there fixing public roads, doing public roads repairs, you know? And, um, and who knows what we'll, we'll use, you know? I may dump some concrete in there. I may, you know, use some, just throw some rocks in there. I don't know. You know, um, because I don't know what the heck I'm doing. And so, I don't think that's a very good way to maintain our roads. And so, we've talked, we put together a, a, a plan for that. And the initial plan, I won't go through the whole thing, but basically there's different options where you can go out there, you can fix it yourself. You can, we have been able to get our town vendor where they've agreed to give the town rate to any resident that needs to have a pothole fixed. They will fix it for them at the town rate, at the customers, at, at the resident's expense. Or the resident can turn the road, the way it sits right now, the resident can bring the road up to standard and then turn the road over to the town. Well, we heard a little bit tonight that that's not an easy thing to do. You got to get the survey and there's a whole expense piece that's associated with that. So, um, so that can be very expensive. So, I got together with Keith and Russell and we've, we've talked through this. And, um, and so what I'd like, and this is kind of a proposal for the council, uh, that I'd like for them to, uh, you know, hey, if we could decide tonight, that would be awesome. If you want to think about it, that's understandable as well. But, um, a, a couple of changes. Number one is I would like to eliminate the requirement for a normal road. I'm not saying a road that's a dirt road. I'm not talking about, you know, the lower section of two-ten that's never really been paved before. I'm talking about a road that is, has potholes in it. I would like to eliminate the current policy that requires the resident to bring it up to standard before it gets turned over to the town. And I'll talk a little bit about more of that in a second. The second thing I would like to do is speaking with Keith, um, he is able to, as, as we've done with some other things, we can put an ordinance on the, on the, uh, on our agenda and maybe we can accumulate these maybe once every three months. And we can actually do an ordinance, very similar, the very similar process that we would be doing for when, when we do the water rights, you know? And, and then we can just by ordinance, we basically are taking the land. Now, we would need, we would never do that unless the resident said, I want you to take my land. I want you to take over the responsibility for it. I want you to take over the liability for it. I want you to take it. Um, and if they wanted us to do it, they like saying, I don't want, you know, I thought I never had that road in the first place. I don't want that road. If you guys are willing to take it, even though it's got some potholes in it, it's all yours. And if they're willing to do that and they're willing to sign a, a, you know, a document that states that, then I think we as a town should take that opportunity to take it, edit in the fold and, um, maintain it properly like we have been doing. And so, so here's, here's the thing. The, the cost and that's associated with, with this whole process is, I think it disrupts, it disrupts our Tisdore program. It is, it, it's really unsafe for a lot of our residents. I know we've got a resident on, I forget whether it's one eighty-fifth or one eighty-six, but on that road that has a pothole in there. She's in her nineties. What, what the heck is she going to do going out there fixing, fixing a, a pothole, you know? This is ridiculous, you know? And, and so I think we need to be able to, it's, it's high time that we update our policy to be able to resolve these things, um, in a way that is smooth and easy for our residents. So, let me stop there. I'll take a breath and let me know what, uh, what you all think.
Mayor, I've got a quick question.
Sure.
If you would. We tried this on a street down on one sixty-six. And some of the residents there didn't turn their property over. They didn't want to turn it over. So, how would you go about that if they do not want to turn it over? In fact, one said that the bank wouldn't allow them, that the mortgage company didn't want to give up the property, so forth. What would you do if there were two or three people, you can't checkerboard a street, fix a park, not fix a park? How would we go about, you can't take it from them. What would we do?
Yeah, absolutely, we would checkerboard it. We absolutely would checkerboard. I'm not talking about repaving here, Jim. I'm talking about fixing potholes.
Okay.
Okay? So, what I'm saying is if, if, if a resident, and I- So, what I'm saying is if, if, if a resident, and I, and I fully expect this to happen, as a matter of fact, I expect most residents will turn us down rather than agree to it. But, for those that do, that do not want the liability, that do not want the responsibility for fixing those potholes, they would sign a document that basically says, "It's yours." And then, in a council meeting, we would take it. Now, the other six or eight on the, on the road that, that said, "I don't want to do that, it's my property, I want to keep it." That's legit, I got no problem with that. But, uh, then they would be responsible for fixing those potholes, they would be responsible for the, the paving if they wanted to do it, you know?
What would happen if someone, and I'll go back to the three, four, five, someone got hurt on that property, sued the entire, uh, people that lived on the street, would that still be in effect, or would those people that gave it back to the town be eliminated from that?
The people that gave it back to the town would be absolutely eliminated from that.
That's right.
Only the people that retained it would have it, would have that liability and be exposing themselves. That's what I'm talking about, that liability.
Right. So theoretically, one or two people on a block of thirty houses could be liable for anything that happened on that, or would it be just in front of their house then?
It would just in front of their house.
Just in front of their house.
The, the unique thing about the, that three, four, five is that that was an HOA, which we have, you know, I mean, that's a, that's a legit HOA, that's not, that's not a civic association.
Right.
That's a homeowners association that pays dues and, and takes care of certain elements. So, so they were all liable for it.
We have the same risk on one-ninety-eighth, we have a legitimate county-required HOA out there, and if somebody hits, I'm sorry, um, if somebody, if we were subject to the same thing that happened in Griffin, three, four, five.
Yeah.
The reason I'm asking-
You can have my property tonight, by the way, sign whatever you want.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I'm, I'm definitely going through the process, I can tell you that.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is that what Rod and, and went through and what Russell went through with the people down the street, just for sixteen homes, was a nightmare.
Absolutely.
We've asked for them to give up part of the easement way for drainage, nobody wants to give it up. But yet, they want the road fixed, they, they don't want to be liable. I mean, it was a real nightmare, the questions-
Jim, we just have to lay out the options and people can make their choice.
Okay.
You know, there's, there's no, you know, I don't see it as a nightmare, I don't, I'm not looking to force, I'm not looking to twist anybody's arm, I'm just giving them options. And the residents are smart enough, they can make their choice, that's the one that's best for them. I'm totally fine with that.
I support the idea.
Yep. Yeah, so is this something, is this a policy change that we can make? Is that, is there anybody that objects or has a concern? Yeah, Gary?
Yeah, just back up a, a couple of, a couple of paragraphs here.
Please do.
Okay. Um, and like in my case, at Rolling Oaks, I owned to the middle of the road on my deed.
Yeah, me too.
Me too.
But on the Property Appraisers website, I don't. So-
How does that work? That sounds like a problem with the Property Appraisers website.
No, it's a right, it's a right-of-way, right-of-way issue. And I, I don't under, so I'm, I'm having a hard time figuring what you're saying.
Keith, can you talk to that? I, I don't, I don't understand that at all.
I was trying to explain, he was asking me the question while somebody was speaking. The town bases its knowledge based on the Property Appraiser site. So, even if he owns it, we base on the public record that we see. So, we maintain Mather because on the Broward County Property Appraiser site, none of those residents are paying taxes on Mather, uh, it's shown as public right-of-way, so we maintain it. He may have the ability to contest that, I don't know if you would, but, uh-
That's your world, Gary.
Yes.
But I mean, that's all over town like that.
Well, so what's, what's your point?
I'm trying to, well, I'm trying to understand where we're fixing, you're, you're saying the town-
All I'm talking about is, is-
Potholes, but are we talking on, on private roads now?
I'm talking about, I, I don't, I don't know your situation, what you just explained to me seems totally illogical, so I can't really speak to it. But what I will say this, is if, if on, if on the website that we're saying that the town is already responsible for the maintenance of that road, then I would say that you're off the hook as far as doing potholes, but I would say that if somebody got into an accident and had an issue on there, you're probably on the, on the hook for the liability. But I'm no attorney, so don't, don't toss that, toss that aside, that's how I would-
I think you were accurate.
Okay, oh, thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to understand what, what you're, what you're asking for.
So, as far as, as far as what I'm talking about here, you, would really not affect you because I'm only talking about the maintenance of the road more than anything else.
Yeah, but it, but I'm wondering, my question is, where does it apply? Because I'm thinking of private roads versus public, public roads.
In a situation like three, four, five, or in, in Bob's situation, that's a different world because that would have to be the HOA saying, "We want to turn over the entire road to, to the town."
But the HOA doesn't own it in our case.
Oh, they don't? Well, I don't, you know, I don't want to get into the legal, you know, let's not talk about every property in town. What I'm talking about is a policy change.
Right.
And, um-
So, maybe to help Councilmember Jablonski, especially in Sunshine Ranches, I know my mom lives on La Ray Road, there are a lot of properties, when you go on the Broward County Property Appraiser website, that they actually own the asphalt, I'm not talking the swell, they own the actual asphalt. In those cases, if there's a pothole, because on the Property Appraiser website it shows that they own it, they're responsible for maintaining it. So, what Councilmember, uh, sorry, Mayor Bright Cruz is suggesting is a mechanism where that resident can say, "I want you all to maintain this in the future, I'm giving you up the rights, you know, to call that my property, uh, provided that you maintain it going forward." By doing so, they also relieve themselves of liability if somewhere were to get into an accident on that portion of the roadway. So, he's only speaking about those sections of the town where a resident is clearly shown to own that road on the Property Appraiser website, and I'll show you an example in a minute, uh, that they don't want to maintain it anymore and they don't want the liability.
Thank you, Keith. Yeah, what he said. No, that was exactly right, that was exactly right.
No, no, I understand, I understand, I understand.
Okay. So, are we good making this policy change? Do we need to, should we make a motion on this? Yes, I see a nod.
Draft something for it, draft a resolution or something?
Yeah. Okay, let's do that, let's, let's do that, let's draft a resolution. What do you, I mean-
The, I, I, Russell's going to say, "I just want to make sure the council knows that if you're taking over a road, you also have the liability of the town owning the road." But clearly, the council knows that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so, from, from my standpoint, you don't need a resol, a resolution because of the fact that what you're, any land that you take would have to come back before you in, in a ordinance anyway. So, you're going to have to approve this anyway, but it, so if you're saying, "This is the option that you want to go, we don't need to wait another two meetings to create that, uh, mechanism, you can just direct staff, this is how we want you to do it."
I would like to do it sooner rather than later because we have some residents that are waiting for a decision here, to be honest with you.
Mayor, I understand, and I don't want, I don't mean to be Debbie Downer today or Doug Downer, uh, but I just want to bring to, uh, the council's attention that if we do something along these lines, which I understand the policy direction, it sounds like it's going to happen, just want to put it out on the record that obviously increases our financial responsibilities too. And so, as long as council's going to be willing to fund the efforts to increase the number of potholes that we're going to have to replace and take care of, that's, I just want to bring that aspect of it out to light as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, I think we should be doing that anyway, to be honest with you. That's just my opinion. I don't, I don't, I don't think we should have residents out there fixing holes in the road.
One last question, when they give up the property, are they paying taxes, no more?
No more.
Okay. So, that will cut their tax bill?
That's, that's the silver lining. Yeah, their tax bill, their tax, their bill for the acreage there will be reduced.
I never saw the bank stopping this, but it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, and, and the residents may want to do it, and the bank does stop it.
Right.
Yeah, I could see it, you know? But I just want to put the policy in place so that we have an option.
Sure.
Are we, are we all in agreement?
Just, I, I just want to make a legal clarification. In the process that you are suggesting the bank can't stop it, cannot.
Oh, really?
The process that Councilmember Albritton was speaking of, the bank can stop it. And just so you understand the difference, in his situation, the resident actually wanted to proactively deed the property to the town. In that case, you need sign off by the mortgagee. In your situation, under the Florida statutes, it's more like a, a taking that we don't have to pay for, and therefore, the bank doesn't have a cha, a choice, it just comes off the property, Appraiser's side.
Okay, great, thank you for that clarification. And once again, let me say clearly, as I possibly can, that it would be the resident's choice. We would never, ever, ever just go out there and take the property. Okay, are we good with that?
Mm-hmm.
We're good with that. Are you, are you okay with that? I mean, are we, you have your direction? Thank you. And thank you all for doing that. I, I, I think it's, I think it's well overdue, and I appreciate that, uh, working with that. All right, um, what else do I have left here? Unfortunately, two more items, then I'm done. I told you this would be a long one, I apologize. All right, um, I wanted to bring up, uh, we've had some things going on here recently with the, uh, the incinerator issue, landfill issue here in town, and I just wanted to get that on the record of where we are, what's going on. You have, you saw, I think it was like two meetings ago, that Mayor Messam from Miramar was here along with much of his staff, and they gave us a presentation on their strategy. They asked us to, um, work with them and, from a lobbying standpoint, on legislation that would basically make it nearly impossible to build an incinerator out in western Broward County near the Everglades for environmental reasons. I want to, um, make sure that we are working on that, uh, one-hundred percent. I think more than ever, um, we need to protect ourselves out here. Um, let me be clear, we want to do the right thing for Broward County all around. But if they're not going to do the right thing, then we got to protect ourselves right here. And that is going to be, I believe, one of the key tools to protecting, to, um, protecting the town of Southwest Ranches going forward. So, anything we need to do, uh, you know, Keith, from a lobbying standpoint, from a, um, anything along those lines, we got to do it because, um, I feel that the, unfortunately, the wheel is turning to the old, uh, either burn it or bury it scenarios, and, um, it's really disappointing for me, uh, to see that after all the time that we spent on looking at new alternatives. It seems, uh, that, uh, we're just getting lazy, to be honest with you, and just, let's just burn it or bury it and move on. And, um, so, I don't want to burn it or bury it out here. So, um, I could, I could go on and on, I won't go on and on, but I, I think, uh, I think that, uh, we need to, we need to do two things. Number one, we need to continue doing what we're doing right now, and that show leadership in the way we, we look at, um, recycling and composting and, um, everything else. I'm amazed at the number of large municipalities here in Broward County that talk the talk about recycling and don't even do it. It's, it's incredible, it's absolutely stunning. And, um, so, if we're going to, if we're going to talk the talk, which we do, then let's walk the walk, which we do, and, um, and I'm proud of us that we do. Uh, we've got this composting, um, effort that I know we put in the budget last year. I have not really heard a lot about that, let's, you know, I don't know if we're ready to talk about that tonight, probably not, I gave absolutely no warning I was going to bring that up. But, uh, I would like to, you know, we meet on Monday. I, I'd really like a full accounting of that, where we are, how we're going to publicize that, how we're going to get that up and running this year.
Mayor, if I could jump in just a second, on, on this topic. Waste Management is building that new facility.
Yeah.
How do they plan on, because they have the old facility, and now they have the new facility, are they going to run both of them simultaneously, just one replacing the other?
I think one's replacing the other.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But still, it's more efficient, can handle higher loads and all that.
Much bigger, much more efficient, much more technologically advanced.
Right, where are they getting all the, the source material from?
I think it's coming from all over South Florida.
Okay, so it's not just Broward County?
No.
Okay.
No, it's a, it's a waste management facility, WM facility, so that's not a Broward County facility.
It's their customers, not by location.
No, okay, I was just trying to get, you know, get some clarity on that.
Sure.
Because, like you, I'm kind of shocked that a lot of the cities don't recycle.
It's mind-boggling.
The biggest, and the biggest, some of the biggest cities, one to our neighbor to the south, doesn't recycle at all.
Not at all.
And it just kind of blows my mind that, you know?
In this day and age, with everything we know and have learned, it is mind-blowing. It's very disappointing. But, all we can do, all we can do is do what's right for our town. And, and I'm so proud of this town that when other towns and cities, you know, said it's going to cost us an extra few bucks to do it, um, we made the decision, you all made the decision, you backed us when we made the decision that it was important to continue to recycle, and that's why we're doing it. And we're doing the right thing, and we're doing it for the right reasons. All right, last one, and I'm done. So, I brought up, uh, a few, uh, I don't know, probably a couple of months ago, the campaign signs, and I don't want that to go away, I would, I, I want to make a change before we get into the next election. We made a change to the, the campaign sign ordinance between four years ago and six months ago. I think that the way it was before we made the change was ten times better than it is today. We had campaign signs out here for a year plus. It was, it was crazy how long those campaign signs were out, you know? I didn't want to see my own signs out there that long, it was ridiculous. And so, you know, before, we were at sixty days, and I know, I know we've got challenges, David?
I don't like that.
Well, I do, I do. Um, I think we have a beautiful town, I think sixty days is plenty of time to get the word out.
That's okay, I'm sorry, it's okay if, if you're retired.
Well-
You work seven days a week to get it out, it's not fair.
David, I wasn't retired four years ago when I ran, I wasn't retired twelve years ago when I ran, I wasn't retired, I, I've been through many, many, many elections when I was not retired. Yes, I'm retired today.
Yeah.
But I've gone through a heck of a lot more elections with being not retired than the one I went through when I was retired. I think that we got to put our town first, this is, this is just, um, I think it's, it trashes our town, and I don't like it, you know? We can vote on it, you know? We're allowed to disagree.
Maybe it's a compromise in between, because I agree, having them out like they were this time.
Yeah.
I got sick of seeing signs, I didn't see them after a while.
No, it's just, yeah.
On the other hand, when we had them out, I think the week of, uh, qualification.
Yeah, yeah, it was around Labor Day.
Yeah.
It was sixty days.
Sixty days, maybe a little bit longer is a bit proper.
I'm okay with ninety days, I'm okay with ninety days, if we want to do that, I'm fine with that. But, but this was a disaster, this was a disaster to me.
Some are still out there.
So, I'd like to, you know, I'd, I'd like to revisit that, and, um, you know, and, and David, you know, I welcome your opportunity to, to adjust it, if, if that's what you'd like to do. But, um, I, and if, and if I get voted down, I get voted down, I can, you know, I can live with that. That's the way, that's the way it works sometimes. But, uh, but I, I'm not, I, I don't like it the way it is, and, um, I don't think it's best for the town, and so, I'd like to see a change, and we'll see what happens.
What is it, what is it currently, remind me?
Currently, it's what, it's before the first, uh, like, election, which is in March. So, it's like, it's, it's like from March first through November, it's like nine months.
When they qualified in June.
No, no, sir. No, it's like before, for the first primary.
Yeah, it says, well, it just says the general, the election, and, and the election isn't defined, and so, people have interpreted that to mean the presidential preference primary, which takes place in February, actually.
Oh, February, there you go.
We had signs going up as soon as February, or right after the presidential preference.
It was bad.
So, if, if, I mean, one suggestion would be to, uh, to define the election that it's referring to and say the general election, the November general election, then it's the timeframe from there. So, that might help to-
So, ninety days prior to the general election.
Or sixty, whatever it is that you so choose.
I'm okay with ninety, I'm, I'm okay with ninety. I, I, I'm not okay with ten months, that was ridiculous.
Yeah, I, I think our last conversation was once, uh, which Keith brought up, the qualification period, when you're putting up signs prior to that.
That's June.
Then that's in June.
That's in June, that's, that's five, six months.
Which I think is way too long myself personally. I'm okay with the ninety days, you know, I'd rather see sixty.
Yeah, so would I.
I'm okay with the ninety days.
So would I.
You know?
I'd rather do sixty.
Mayor, it became a lot of work keeping them up.
Yeah, and that's the other thing.
The plastic zip ties would break and rot, and, I mean, it was a constant, constant thing to keep them up.
And let me tell you, we were fortunate that we didn't have a hurricane this year.
Yes.
Yeah.
If we'd have had a hurricane come through, we'd have had those signs flying all over town.
Or you'd be taking them down and putting them back up again.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's no bueno.
Yeah.
It was rough.
It was rough.
Against freedom, so, all right.
It was rough.
I'll vote against freedom.
Thank you, David. All right, and with that, um, yeah. Thank you, David. All right. And with that, um, yeah.
Mayor, just so, so we know. Are you asking for an ordinance to be brought back?
I am.
At 90 days?
At 90 days.
90 days prior to the general election in November?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be great.
So that would, that would be in July?
That would be, that would be in August.
August.
Basically, August, September, October.
Okay.
All right. I think my rant is over, and, um, thank you all for, for putting up with it. And, um, let's move on to, uh, legal comments. Top that, Keith.
I, I promise you, Mayor, I cannot.
Thank you.
Um, uh, first and foremost, I, I'm donating time this weekend. The National Student Broadcast Tournament is in Tampa this year. Um, there are actually three kids that I know from Southwest Ranches who will be there. And unfortunately, I'm gonna miss the Astronite Memorial, which I actually think should be named the Astronite Celebration of Life, rather than nor, uh, memorial.
Really?
You know, truly. Um, you know, I'll reach out to the family directly, and, you know, my thoughts and prayers are, are still absolutely with them, and I look forward to contributing, um, to, um, his fund, um, that he requested as well. Um, as I was driving here, uh, I got a call, uh, relating to the, uh, the litigation that we have with Sid, which, uh, the, the gentleman's name, I think, is Rick Cormier, who's involved in it. He may have reached out to some of you as well. Uh, we went back and forth as I was driving here, and I was talking to him outside right before the meeting, and, and I'm in agreement with, now with what he's proposing, that I want to run by the council to make sure that everyone's basically on the same page. Uh, they will agree to dismiss their appeal, you know, which will save us legal fees. They wouldn't have won the appeal anyway, and they, they know that. They'll agree to dismiss the appeal, um, and agree, if we agree that the fine that they're to pay is $150 a day up through April 1, when they'll be in full compliance, and I'll get there in a minute. Um, there was a, a question at the last code hearing whether or not it was 250 a day or 150 a day. So if we settle the issue, say 150 a day, we agree to the 30% mitigation, which we almost do universally at this point for, for good cause. Um, they will agree that the tenant will be off the property by April 1, that they will no longer do the landscaping business from the property. They will not turn the property into a vegetative waste or mulching operation, um, and that they understand that the fine they're after would go up to $500 per day, um, if they were to violate this agreement. It's a settlement agreement, not a, uh, mitigation. And that they will pay the existing fine by April 5. Uh, they asked me if I thought the town would settle. I'm recommending absolutely. I think it's fair. There's no reason to spend more legal fees on this, even though we would win. I'd rather them come into compliance, give the residents relief that they're looking for, and not worry about that case moving forward. So I just want to make sure the council's.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that forward, Keith. I absolutely agree with that. I, I would support that 100%. I think that's, that's.
Likewise.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
All right. So as long as it's unanimous, Deborah, if you could please let the record reflect that it was discussed and agreed to by the council, and I'll work on the settlement docs in dismissing that case.
Perfect. Thank you, Keith.
That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have, uh, one or two quick things. Um, so the Rancher Academy, as you mentioned earlier, we do have registration, uh, form that's available on the town website. If you go to the main page of the town website, there's a tile that says Rancher Academy, gives some background, and also has the, an entry form or registration form that you can fill out online that basically reserves your spot. We have limited space for the Rancher Academy, so we're asking people, if you're interested, to sign up now. The only way to do that is to do the registration, or to come into town hall and, and do a physical registration. At this point, uh, with a couple of weeks left before we start, we're a third of the way reserved, so we, we have limited space left. And so I just want to make sure that people, um, register soon if they want to participate.
Great.
The other thing that I wanted to bring a quick update on, uh, was something that we discussed at our Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Department Board of Directors meeting back in, uh, last June, related to the attack truck purchase. Uh, that attack truck is imminent. I mean, we should be getting it in the first two weeks of, of March. Uh, Chief is actually scheduling or working on scheduling a visit to see the vehicle, because it's ready to be delivered very soon. Uh, so what comes now is what do we do with the current attack truck, the old dilapidated truck that we no longer have a use for, once we take delivery of the new vehicle?
For anyone listening, it's a pristine attack truck. Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. How could I? I'm remiss. Thank you.
That we highly value.
Yes. Uh, so anyway, so we need to surplus that vehicle, and I just wanted to affirm something that we talked about previously, which was to surplus that vehicle. And what I would recommend is that we use the same company that served as the broker for us to find this, the attack truck that we are acquiring, um, uh, and utilize the same firm. They, they basically are in this industry. They have a lot of, but, uh, visibility on their website. They have a lot of customers that come and visit their site. Um, so it would. It's 10% if it's one of their customers, but if it's one of our customers that sees it from our website or something else, and we promote, they won't take any commission.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So I think it's a, I think it's a win-win, and I, you know, just would recommend that and seek your reaffirmation to do that.
Pizza artificial refoundation.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good with it. Anybody have any issues?
Fifty bucks. I can drive a stick.
We're all good?
Yeah.
I think we're good.
All right, awesome. And then the last thing is, I will be providing you guys with some documentation received from FPNL. I met with FPNL out in the field, uh, on thoroughbred, on a project that was going on out there along with Rod, and we spoke to Baldwin English, our representative from FPNL, related to the concerns raised by one of the residents about the bentonite, the lubricant that was used for the, um, for the directional boring. Basically, FPNL's position is that it is a safe lubricant. It's used in the industry. I will provide you with some documentation that they provided to me. I just got it today, so I will send, send it to you guys tomorrow. Uh, but basically, what they're saying is that lubricant is used industry-wide for directional boring, and also for the wells that, um, municipal utilities for drinking water. So they feel that if it wasn't safe, if it wouldn't be something that would be safe to use, obviously, it wouldn't be used industry-wide for those purposes, even for drinking water. So I'll provide you that information. I just wanted to give you a little bit of, you know, background and let you know that it wasn't something that, uh, was going unnoticed and unanswered.
Good. Yeah, I don't see that.
I'd like, I'd like Mr. English to come here and explain it to me.
I can make the request.
Because I, I, I would like to have him have that fluid in front of him and see how, how much he's willing to ingest any of that.
It's used in well drilling everywhere. I agree with you. I understand what it is now. Now that you said bentonite.
Right.
That's the lubricant they use when they drill the big ones. That's what Cooper City just used a couple, a couple of years ago.
Right. And also, the question that was asked by the resident too was the difference of directional as opposed to missile, uh, boring. The issue with the missile boring is that you can't do large sections at a time. It's very labor-intensive because it's, and it's very laborious, because it would take a lot of time, because they can only do short runs. Also, it, they don't have a lot of control, because it's missile, uh, missile-driven. Uh, if it runs into a rock or something like that, they can't do straight runs with it. So it's, it's not very practical for what they needed to do. So that's, that was their, their rationale for using directional boring. I certainly will make the rec, uh, request, Councilmember, um, to have Mr. English here, and if you'd like him to explain, he can explain. Okay?
Quick question, Russell, if you would. If council would like to attend the ranchers' class, do we register, or? What do we do?
You register, and you pay double the fee.
Yeah.
Which is zero.
Double. Good bargain at any price.
Which, to be clear, if you didn't hear, is zero. I don't want people to think there's a fee.
I'm sorry, council does not have to register. I was kidding.
Would you show up?
All right. We're good. Okay. Item number nine, please.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, urging the Florida State Legislature to enact legislation to provide a public records exemption for municipal clerks and employees who perform municipal elections work, or have any part in code enforcement functions of a city, and providing for an effective date.
Great. Yeah, can.
Second.
Have a motion a second. Uh, Russell, can you, can you speak to this, either you or Keith?
Sure.
I think there's a lot of misnomers about what this is about and what it's not about.
Certainly. I'll give you a quick overview on this. So basically, what it is, is this is a resolution requesting that the Florida Legislature support two bills that have been filed, uh, a House bill and the companion Senate bill, that would provide a public records exemption for city clerk staff and any staff members that they have that handle code, code matters. Uh, this is an effort by the Florida Association of City Clerks to protect city clerks and their staff. Uh, as you, you know, as you're all well aware, the 2020 elections led to some rancor, um, and people, you know, um, basically coming after elections officials. And so the Florida Association of City Clerks was very concerned about that, and wanted to afford protections for the city clerks for their home addresses and phone numbers, uh, only. That's, that's basically what the protection is. Much the same that firefighters have, much the same that police officers have, much the same that human resource directors have. Just basically providing an exemption to their home address and phone numbers, and basically, that's it. Now, city clerks' offices around the state handle different things, right? Not everybody handles things the same way. So some city clerks' office staff handle code enforcement matters. They handle, uh, issues pertaining to filing code cases and things of that nature. So there's language in there about codes, uh, handling code, code enforcement issues. But basically, the exemption itself that's being requested to be provided is just simply for their, uh, home addresses and phone numbers.
And by the way, just to make it clear for the record, the town has nothing to do with this law. We're not the impetus behind the law. Um, and it is just something from the, uh, the League of, of Clerks, uh, sorry if I'm saying the name wrong.
Florida Association.
Florida Association of Clerks that has requested every municipality in the state to support their protection in this item.
Right. Thank you.
Mayor, the Broward League of Cities, I've been in discussion with a lot of the mayors and councilmen that I see are also in agreement with it.
Good. Yeah, I think it makes sense. Yeah.
I agree with the concept, but code enforcement, our code compliance folks are not town employees. How does this impact them?
Again, this was more geared towards city clerk staff that handle code enforcement matters.
So it doesn't impact us in that regard?
Not in that regard, but there is, but, well, so, let me just step back for a minute. There is protection already for code enforcement staff for, there is an exemption for code enforcement staff already. So they're already protected, even though they're not town employees.
Okay.
Right. They should have that protection.
Right.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kazinsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. Item number 10, budget calendar. Nothing gets, uh, you know, gets the blood pumping like a good budget calendar.
Good on your birthday.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Yes, this is pretty much, uh, the first item, um, for the, for the budget, uh, for the '25, '26 budget. We've pretty much just been bringing the calendar of the date. Um, it helps as the guide for us, council and the public, as to, uh, to know where we are each step of the line, and when those items are due.
Great.
Um, for this, there's not a resolution, but I just want, um, by consensus for, uh, by council to accept the item, so that way we can, uh, formalize, uh, the calendar.
Very good. And, and thank you for the work that goes into this. I know this is, uh, a lot of coordination with a lot of different groups to get this done, so appreciate this calendar. Um, any, as we look at the calendar, any concerns, comments, issues with it? Uh, it looks good to me. We're not, we don't need a particular proposal, uh, vote or anything on this, right? We're just presenting it.
Uh, acknowledge and receive, so that way we can move forward with the calendar. So that's all we need.
Just accepting it.
There's a consensus here that we, we're good with it.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Uh, we have item number 11. We have the minutes from the executive session on December 4. We have minutes from the December 12 regular council meeting. We have the minutes from the executive, uh, executive session on December 18, and we have, uh, the recognition of the ethics training minutes, um, on December 18 as well. Do you have a motion?
Motion approved.
Thank you, David. I have a motion a second. Is there any additions, corrections to those, any of those minutes? Seeing none. Does the public have any additions or corrections to any of those minutes? Seeing none. If we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kazinsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Minutes passed.
Very good. It's up to you, Gary.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out. Really appreciate it.